Will you come forward to lead us in the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing for among those silenced? Thank you, you may be seated. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Heinz makes a motion to approve the agenda as listed, is her second?
Second.
Mr. Kewbo, seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of them in favor of approving the agenda as listed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Recognition, Dr. Austin?
First off, Madam Chairman, we have our Kingsport Times News drawing board recognitions. And you can see some of the handiwork, as well as the list of students. We're reeveling to you that these students will be recognized. And keep in mind, these recognitions are what students take in the initiative on their own to do this work during the summer. So, a lot of effort by these individuals to be published artists. Next up, we're going to bring up Mr. Long to recognize a couple of exemplary career and technical programs, as well as individuals. So, Mr. Long.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, I have two ready recognitions, and Michelle's going to get a board to recognize Robbie Burshitt. Thank you. Any statements? Come on forward.
Mr. Robbie Burshitt.
For you and on that show, on the excellent district district superintendent school. I just wanted to recognize an exceptional young man for his achievement in agriculture. Robbie Burshitt has been a legend as the Appalachian area, I think by his present for the 2019-2020 school year. He'll be representing us at the legal dance this past summer. He played the highest individual in the state for the FFA life occupation. And he plays first in the 48th life judgment, which puts him on the Virginia State Life Judgment team. He'll be coached to train along with the other Virginia Tech Life Judgment teams and the Virginia Tech advisors. And recently, he was awarded the Outstanding Young Agriculture by the Farm Bureau Young Farmers, and was awarded $1,500 scholarship. We're very proud of his accomplishments and excited to see what the future holds for him. Thank you.
You want to speak, Robbie?
I have a thing to say.
But you want to tell me about your travels and some things you've done?
Well, I'd like to know what goes on with you and the region.
I'll give you a few. Let's see.
Actually, somewhere I've been to.
So, the day we got out of school, we had our FFA banquet. And that evening, I left to go to Oklahoma. And I was in Oklahoma for two weeks doing different judging camps and that nature. Then after that, I got home. I was home for three days, and then I left for Colorado. Once I got to Colorado, we went up into Wyoming and different portions of that. And I went to Wyoming Life Judgment Camp and got to see the college national rodeo finals. And then, once I come back, I went to the state contest for Virginia 48 and FFA. And thankfully, we won both of those. And then, after that, I went to Virginia Tech's Life Judgment. And I was home for two weeks. And then, I had to go give a speech at, let's see, it was Shenandoah County for the Agricultural of the Year, and wound up winning that. So, it's been one heck of a summer for me.
Talking for a summer.
Where were you in Oklahoma?
Let's see, I was in Blackwell. Trying to think, Blackwell. It's where Northern Oklahoma College is, I'm trying to think of that town. Where is it, Mont? Where was it?
Tomfoor.
Tomfoor, Oklahoma. And went to Oklahoma City and bought a new suit. There might as well celebrate.
What's your plan if you guys are...
My plan is to go to a junior college somewhere and judge for two years, and then go on to a university and get my degree in food and meat science.
Could be a little proud of you.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next recognition tonight is one of our teachers, and this is Miss Vicki Saunders. She has received the Walter Schill BBA, it's not our Walter Schill, BBA 2019 Business Seer of the Year. And so, this was a nomination process, and then she had to have some referrals. I was part of that referral. And we had to speak about her passion for organization, the organization, accomplishments, routines, what her credentials are for our students are, organization of that. And so, she hang on top of the ones receiving this award. So, she is the 2019 Business Teacher of the Year for the BBA.
Mr. Roberts, would you like to make some remarks?
I was very surprised because, I think a lot of them don't think we exist. One thing was very surprising, but as long as it brings recognition to the Lee County school system, Thomas Walker High School and my students and my family, it's good. So, I'm just proud to represent the school system.
Mr. Roberts, do you have a flag, flag for you, please?
She has a flag.
This is a nice recognition for Vicki, but I will say, I can get seated behind her every year graduation at Thomas Walker. And I always say this, after graduation is over, more graduates come over and hug her and thank her for being their teacher. And so, that's even a better award. And I notice that they really appreciate what you do down there, and I appreciate what you do.
And you'll be going to the national conference, I'm assuming now?
I will go to the Southern Business Education Association conference and say, yeah, I'll tell you where you can find me.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now open the floor up to a couple of comments. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment? Anyone that would like to make a comment? Moving on, board comments, Mr. Heinz?
Yeah, I've got a question, actually, again, a comment. So, a teacher's got an email today about a program on September 20th, a meeting was valid about the health program.
Try and inform Kerry, yes, sir.
September 20th, not a non-school day?
It's an optional, it's an optional training that's made available.
Do you really expect a lot of people coming in that day for this training?
Twelve-month staff, yes, sir. But 10-month staff, no.
That's what I said, yeah. Okay.
We didn't want to interrupt an instructional day for the training, but we wanted to make it available. It can be a work day for 10-month, 11-month staff, but it's just an opportunity that's available here in Lee County. For the workers, you could probably...
Probably have a plan on the day of the day. The second thing is just a comment, and I was looking at the financials. And I wanted to point out something, because I think sometimes I get asked questions about things, and I think that there's some misconceptions about how the finances of the school system work. Of course, we're on an annual budget. So, every month, we come to these meetings, and we have a printout of revenues, we have a printout of expenditures, and we have a treasurer's report, which shows all expenditures and how they're held and whatever. So, I just pointed this out because, for instance, this month, and I can't pull it up on my computer for some reason, but from memory, I think that our revenues for last reported year, which would be last month, was $2.5 million, I believe. 2.5 something, I can't remember the exact number, but anyway. So, our expenditures were 2.1 million, I believe, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, we spent $400,000 some ways last month, right? Now, I could take you back a couple of months ago, and it might have been just the opposite. And so, that's when I get questions, but you all bankruptness, you all know what you're doing, do you know what you're spending, and whatever, and what's coming in? Well, yeah, we do. It's an annual budget. So, things are not always zeroing out every month, it's never going to happen. So, I just wanted to kind of explain that to give some people out in the public some information, because I think it's useful when you, if you actually go and look at board docs, and you wonder what in the world is this board doing, or what's the school system doing? There's an easy explanation, that right there is it. So, I just wanted to say that, it struck me today when I was looking at the financials. So, I'll shut up now.
May I speak to that, too, real quick? If you look, I pulled it up, this is our, just a summary sheet that Ms. Wells does for us with cooperation from Mr. Dean and Treasurer's Office. But you can see, we've got $56,000 in federal revenue. What was happening in the spring is there were some challenges at the department that we were about a million dollars behind in reimbursements. We had submitted, we had expended the funds, and the money was sitting there in Richmond. And we had requested the funds, but it wasn't coming in. There was a significant issue there for three or four months, and so, that was a processing issue, not necessarily, it affected our cash flow, but it wasn't a budget issue, so.
And it'll come up later in the meeting, if I could see, I can tell you when. We're going to ask for another reappropriation from the county, so you can see, actually, our finances for last year were very sound, so that'll be here in a few minutes, I guess.
And there are times in the year that either more revenue or more expenditures come in, too, as far as that goes. Is that it, Mr. Heinz?
It's off.
Okay. Ms. Fannin?
Yes, there's a whole lot of teachers here. I find it very heartwarming of so many teachers that were excited to get back into school. That tells me something, that you are truly qualified, because I'm going to be honest with you, I was off a month, and for my job, I took a month of July of years, and I was not ready to come back. I was bitter, and I, but I find that to be very touching, when you find somebody that was excited to go back to work, that were excited to get their rooms ready, that were excited, you know, to see the kids on social media, you saw everybody, you know, have their rooms ready and everything. So, I want to thank y'all for your excitement, or your, it's just, it's uplifting when you see somebody that is employed by something that you're connected with to be excited about it. And all the first days of school, you know, that is great. And Mr. Burshitt, you are a good leader. I don't know that Lee County has ever had anything quite like you. And I commend you for that, and you worked hard, and I'm sure your mama is very, very proud of you, and you've been done a lot. But you know, what you're doing is a lifelong lesson, you'll take this with you your whole life. And that's fantastic, and I appreciate, I want to call her Michelle, but it's Michelle's sister, I always get big to them. I appreciate her, and I'm sure you have a sponsor to go with you, you know, when you do what you do, but that is, that is very, very awesome.
Thank you.
Next, you? Mr. Roberts? Mr. Gilbert?
This man is so wonderful. I do want to congratulate you for what you've done, you've proud of a lot, and your parents are very dedicated to helping you, and I don't mind it. And it is tough to chase kids all this, this end of Virginia, and you're one countrywide that I like. Your parents, their support for you, I wish there was a lot more, because we could do a whole lot more, and kids could exceed the whole lot more than what they do without that parent's support, it'd be tough. And I always thank mom that. Proud, you're proud of Ms. Snoggers for what she's done, and she's got a lot of respect for me and the students there, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll congratulate her, two honorees tonight. Robbie, you probably need to find somebody that would be willing to shadow you so you could bring along another one or two. And as far as that goes, Ms. Snoggers, the same thing for you, that we need some mentors for our young teachers out there. And thank you, and congratulations to both of you. I also want to congratulate Tammy Wade, a teacher at Drive Elementary School, who won the Watson Bott's Favorite Teacher Contest. The people were to nominate a teacher to win a crate full of school supplies, and also a free eye exam and glasses, and she was the winner. And I'd like to thank Watson Botts for doing this giveaway. And I'd like to thank Dr. Austin for the invitation for going around to the schools yesterday on opening day. And I hope we'll do it again a little bit later on in school year. Unfortunately, we're never here during American Education Week, so maybe before or after that, we can hit the road again. And I wish the teachers and the students that they have a great year this year. All right, so, moving on, is there any objection to approving the consent agenda as listed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved as listed. Reports to the board, anybody? Hearing none, all right. Reports to the division superintendent?
All right, Mrs. Jesse mentioned, of course, yesterday was the first day of school, off to a good start. We had, I'm going to say from transportation side, at the earliest here, but a very smooth start from transportation side, as well as day one. I heard very few complaints, a couple of challenges, but we dealt with some issues, but nothing of magnitude that we've had in previous years. So, a very smooth start to school, and I think that's attributable to the efforts that are put forth by division staff, as well as principals, principals, and third building level staff, have done an incredible job this year getting ready for school. So, hats off to everyone, as well as teachers, being prepared on the first day. So, it's a team effort from top to bottom, and certainly appreciate everything that everybody does. The next up is, just to give you an update on enrollment from the first day, we're looking at 2,981 students as of day one. That's 31 students more than what we had budgeted, and that's a few less than what we had talked to you about in June and July, when we were looking at summer estimations. So, we'll see what the final impact is, but this is day two. Usually, we take a snapshot on day one, and we look at day five and day 10. And at day 10, we've got a pretty good idea of where we are budget-wise, but we built a budget on 2,950 students, so we are in good shape. So, just a quick update there. Next up, we've got update on division. This is preliminary information that is coming from Richmond, but as you can see, nine of our 10 schools are fully accredited. So, good news on that front, continue to make a lot of progress, Lee High is accredited conditions, and that plays into chronic absenteeism. We are going to take some measures, I talked to you previously, about some things that we've been working on over the past year. And we've got a first review of a policy that we would like the board to consider actionable in September. I realize that'll be three weeks into the school year, but we're willing to try to take some measures to really put an effort on the importance of being in school. So, that's a draft policy for you to consider and set in 30 days. But overall, great start to this school year, and good news on the enrollment. So, any questions? All right, next, just an operations update of what's going on in maintenance, so. I'll read that to you.
We only feed the project with maintenance.
Any action tonight? Yes, ma'am. But as of right now, just regular maintenance at this point. But one thing that I do want to send condolences out is to Eddie Hall's family. He is, was a valuable part of our maintenance team, and he passed away last month. He was a good man, but a tremendous employee for Lee County Public Schools. He will be a tough one to replace, not only from a worth ethic side, but also from an attitude side. So, I want to send condolences to his family. Any questions? Back to you, Madam Chairman.
Action items, all right, you mentioned about the retention policy, all right, first review?
Yes, ma'am, and it's available online, we get feedback, this is something our principals, I don't have the draft form work on there, but we'll make sure we get that on there. As proposed, elementary and middle school, if you miss more than 16 days in a year, you would be denied credit, or denied, or be retained. Now, there's a defined waiver policy in here, absences would be exclusive of field trips, administrative excuses, as well as school-sponsored athletics. Now, administrative excuses would be, if we have somebody serving as a legislative intern in Richmond, that would be an administrative excuse. So, those are few and far between. But the intent here is to really emphasize the importance of being in school, not just missing and making up your work, but actually being there to be part of the interactions and part of the collaboration, so.
So, no teachers had any input into the policy?
There have been some, but not...
Or maybe through the principal or something?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So, and I read it, maybe I missed it, but the language does not say, it says any absence, it does not say unexcused absence. So, a child gets sick, has surgery, and the surgeon signs a paper that says this child cannot be at school for the next three weeks, and that definitely had to ask for a waiver.
Yes, sir. And because chronic absenteeism doesn't carry...
But that's, but that's, but I'm looking at the situation. That's just not a good lane to hope we place what the board...
Would you know there are home bans?
Well, once you miss 18 days, it hits us on chronic absenteeism. I mean, it doesn't matter the reason, there are no exceptions to that from the state.
Do we have something implied that, say, you are scheduled to say, just like he said, you have a surgery, and you know that that child is going to be out maybe two weeks? Do we have anything implied that states, if we have this, then this child being qualified for home ban? Do we have any...
Yes, ma'am, and there's a process for making up work, as well as home ban. There are situations that we can deal with that way.
Are there any kids that have surgery that they can't get home to?
Correct. And there'll be a waiver process, the parent just provides us doctor's notes, which we probably will already have, we'll be aware of the circumstances, parents right now. There is a process to wait this, to be reasonable in this. It's just in my estimation, sitting in expectation that we want students in school every day, and then, if they can't be there for extenuating circumstances, that will be accounted for in this process.
How many days does truancy then come into play that they need?
Truancy kicks in after five.
Five?
And that's first...
Five unexcused?
Yes, ma'am. That's when we start doing notices, and then court proceedings start, that changed July 1, and I want to think it's day 11. So, I can get more details on that, but it's in policy also.
Because everyone else is questioning that, that it is five unexcused?
Yes, ma'am, that's when we start sending notices. Now, that doesn't end your, in court at five absences, that's just when we first send the notices out and start truancy notifications.
But that's unexcused absence?
Yes, sir.
But if you have five, does that start truancy proceedings?
No, sir.
The law may delay the distinction here?
Chronic absenteeism, but again, this is...
The law may delay instead of 16, truancy starts at five. I mean, I just want, where's this number number on?
Close to 18, because you can miss 10 percent of the school...
Which is about 10%?
Yes, sir, 10% of 180 days is 18. And we thought 16 would be a reasonable number, we could change it to 12, but we thought that that's going to increase the amount of paperwork that would be handled at school level, as well as division level, and more burden on parents. So, we thought 16 would be a reasonable number to start with, and we've looked at our data also. So, that's where that number came from. And of course, eight, with this high school, you've got two semesters, that's a total of 16. Any other questions? Again, first review is out for public feedback, you and I'm sure we'll get some feedback, we will take feedback, come back with modifications, if it's even viable based on feedback that we all get. So, again, first review, possibly actionable next month.
Quit. The item to request of the board supervisors, a reappropriation?
I'm moving to request the board supervisors, a reappropriation of $647,435.93 in state revenues for fiscal year 2019, FY '19, fiscal year 2020, FY '18.
Mr. Heinz makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Fannin, second, Dr. Austin, would you like to...
Madam Chairman, that is a appropriation, as you can see up on the screen, it's going to be these two dollar amounts that are added together, that's worth a dollar amount of approximately $647,000, as Mr. Heinz just mentioned. What we are requesting of board supervisors is on our budget side, we will put the top dollar amount in, or facilities, and the bottom dollar amount we're requesting to be transferred into the textbook fund. So, that's actually cash that we had on hand at the end of the fiscal year. We'll talk more about some other cash that we had, and what we're proposing with that, but this will go into this year's budget, is what we're proposing, is carryover from last year.
For textbooks?
$200,000 for textbooks, and $400,000, I think it's $434,000 for facilities. That plays into roofs, and then some other action items that we've got coming.
I guess there could potentially be, and you're talking almost about a million dollars, $800,000?
It ends up $766,000.
$700,000 something, I can't, I can't say it here. But anyway, I guess the question, thank you, the question might be asked, why didn't we spend more of that throughout the school year?
Just responsible spending, we didn't need it, so we didn't spend it. We didn't, just being responsible with them.
And plus two, we didn't know what might happen with students?
Yes, ma'am.
Number of students?
Or more than.
We can.
One more.
Mr. Heinz makes the motion, seconded by Ms. Fannin, to request of board supervisors, the reappropriation of $647,435.93 in state revenues from fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2020. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Action on the request of the board supervisors to transfer money?
I'm moving to request the Lee County Board Supervisors, transfer $40,208 to Lee County School Capital Reserve Fund for fiscal year 2019, FY '19.
Is there a second? Mr. Gilbert, a second, again, Dr. Austin, you want to...
Explanation on this one, at the end of the year, we have a little over 3/4 of a million dollars of cash in our account. What you just voted on, move some of that into the operating fund this year, per our agreement with the board supervisors. Anything that they give us in excess of required local effort, required local match, we give back to them, and they do a 2/3, 1/3 split. 2/3 goes to the capital reserve account, 1/3 goes back to the books. Last year, they didn't transfer any of the $78,000 that we asked to be moved, so it's still sitting in our account. So, this year, we're asking that the entire 100% go into the capital reserve account, which is, administration's recommending that, so to the 2/3, 1/3, since they didn't transfer it last year, and they didn't realize it, which is the whole thing in capital reserves, what administration's recommending. And again, that's carryover from last year, that you've already acted on, but it's not been transferred, so I feel like we need to do it again.
Who's responsibility to transfer?
That could be between board supervisor, the county administrator, and trainer. I don't know where the...
And is there a dollar amount of the board supervisors, to leave this capital reserve fund at 38?
No, sir, not aside from what we put in there with our agreement.
All those in favor of requesting the Lee County Board of Supervisors to transfer $40,208 to Lee County School Board Capital Reserve Fund?
It was the 77.
77.
Sorry, that's this year's money, then, I was speaking about FY '18.
To the, all right, for the fiscal year 2019. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and now we're going into the 78, the approximately 78,000, is there a motion?
I'm moving to request the Lee County Board Supervisors, transfer $57,654 to Lee County School Board Capital Reserve Fund for fiscal year 2018, FY '18, FY '18 you just talked about.
Can I second that?
Ms. Fannin, second, is there any other clarification, Dr. Austin?
That's the money this year, that's the excess of the required local, that they have to give us some.
All right, all those in favor, that we request the Lee County Board of Supervisors transfer $77,654 to the Lee County School Board Capital Reserve Fund for fiscal year 2018? All, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to enter into a lease agreement with Besta Modular.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, as you're aware, we've been working on facilities for a significant period of time. What we're proposing is replacing the trailers at Elk Knob with one large unit, a modular unit, that would have classrooms, as well as restrooms in it, that are ADA accessible. And this would be a lease for five years, that has a purchase cost at the end, but the one unit, though, is much more secure than the six existing units that we currently have, as well as, some of those are 45 years plus old, and so, they're well past the end of life. We've looked at a number of options, up to and including just replacing each unit with comparable 24 by 60, or comparable 28 by 70 unit, and those are not available for a variety of reasons. But the biggest thing that I've heard is, with the number of natural disasters, we've been working on this since April, and since the number of between hurricanes, storms, fires, FEMA has put a lot of money in these type of units, and the market's just not there. So, we were very blessed to have a couple that have come off of other projects. These are used units, and that's why they're priced accordingly. But it would be a three-year lease with two renewable terms, and I put up there a five-year lease total, and you can see what it would cost to get them here, as well as to purchase them at the end of five years. So, overall, administration looking at it, this is going to cost us less over six fiscal years than it would for the same amount of space with the purchase of just individual units. So, this would take care of space in both Elydale, as well as Elk Knob. We would replace four trailers at Elydale, six trailers at Elk Knob.
Since they are used, can we be assured of the condition you're in?
We've seen pictures, and yes, we've got assurances in the contract, and if they get here and they're not what we want, then we can send them back. So, yes, ma'am.
Do we have any questions for Dr. Austin?
Or do you want to... Life of the lease, and they pretty much become air once they get on grounds. We can change doors, we can put in walls, there's things that we can do to them, so they would become air proper. They come with air conditioning, heat, they're already pre-wired, I mean, they're in modular units, they pull in, they drop it, they connect it, they set it up, and they're ready to run.
to rock.
Did you, did you price a double Y type bill?
Yes, sir.
At any point, we were talking about that.
They pretty much.
Twenty-four by double Y from any manufacturer?
Twenty-four by sixty that we saw on the prices was about eighty thousand dollars just for the building, by the time it was delivered, installed, set up and everything, it was almost a hundred thousand. Now, that is consistent with what we did when we put in the new ones at Rose Hill and the new one at Flatwoods. So, we put those in two years ago and pricing has not changed, if anything, I think it's gone up a little.
Are any of the units that have been replaced in sound?
Two possibly, but we're looking at that for relocation at other sites, specifically one at Rose Hill and put another one in San Diego. But again, we'll see what they look like, look like when we take them apart.
I'm speaking of the ones at Elydale, one of those deals, I've arrived so much in the county or a year.
He's saying it's real old in there.
Not really, I'm old, I'm old, but it's each panel with their minds. I can tell you that from experience, I've been through it, under it, around it, they're absolute correction and I don't think our students deserve to say an absolute correction by only, by only, that if we have to do this on our own, I'm all vote. The board supervisors doesn't want to help, I'm still all vote.
And to speak to the terminus, that's even with treatments and regular treatment from pest control and efforts made by our staff, but it's.
Bricks and mortar is about.
Yes, sir.
It's about double the money to make five big classrooms, two classrooms, it's just not.
And this price includes everything, you setting it up, putting everything up?
Yes, ma'am, and now we will have to put in some ramps and we're gonna change a couple of the roof and maintenance is where the, I mentioned earlier.
What type of under, like would it be on a foundation of block or what?
No, ma'am, they'll have a crossbones under like what our current units have. Now, depending on what we find at Elkhorn with the rock there, you know, as how we'll have to set it, it will depend on clearance and I mean, we'll, we'll make sure it's done within code, we've already spoken with building inspector, we'll work with fire marshal, we'll make sure it's done correctly, but having everybody on the roof is a lot better than what we're currently got.
Will we be doing the grade work or will we do?
We'll contract that out, I'll reach out to local contractors and we'll get that done. As far as the timeframe, from notification, two, three weeks to have the units on site, two weeks to have them installed, so we're looking six to eight weeks realistically to have everything done, so we've got a lot of work to do pending your action, but we'll get it done.
You have, you have spoken with building inspector?
Yes, ma'am.
He thinks everything is good.
We haven't spent a lot of this time on that and you're always approval, I'd have a tied-up staff nor venue of contractors on that yet, but.
So, they, they not recommended that you walk under?
Well, you'll have supports, but it'll have underpinning and it depends, I would say, though, once we figure out what we've got, what we look at the location.
The ones that have on there is, I may have threw them one time, correct, if I'm on two of them, I have.
Correct.
They have to walk out of that?
Try. The language, there's three of them, I think, at Running Water, Mr. Early on, which helps five, is it three of the six at Running Water or is it four?
Four of them, the last two in the end.
The two?
Can you work them right?
If we, if we're willing to do this tonight, when we get ready to go in and what we would do with our children while, while we're away, we'll get. Weather permitting, six to eight weeks is what I think would be reasonable, we're looking probably mid-October realistically of having them in there. With the proposed locations, it would only impact two classrooms, so we've talked to both principals, Mr. Cave and Mr. Hug about doing that temporarily and they've located and be worth a game. Now, of course, there'll be a noise level, there'll be movements, there'll be a lot of action, but as far as actual relocation, there only will be two buildings.
So, we're gonna be able to get water to the units at Elkhorn?
Yes, sir.
Where it's necessary?
Yes, sir. We will locate it where we can get water.
I'm making a motion, and I'm really, it's very close to Vestas Modular. By units at Elkhorn, maybe the.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kidwell makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Hines, to enter into an agreement with Vestas Modular to provide units at Elkhorn Elementary and Elydale Middle. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. An agreement with Ampleo Speech Incorporated, would you like to explain?
Administration's recommending this as an emergency procurement. We had a request for proposals and this is the, the call version as well as the online version of speech language therapy, speech therapy. We have speech language, that pathologist that we've been advertising for a number of months and we've not been able to fill that position. Ms. Mooney and her staff have worked very diligently to make sure that all of our K-two students have a person with them. This is intended until we can find a staff member, our three speech language pathologists have been more than gracious and balanced case loads, but this will take care of our third and fourth graders until we can find somebody. So, that's why we're proposing this as emergency procurement because by the time we go through another RFP process, we'll be two months in school. So, we're making this recommendation based on reference checks with some other divisions that are using this. Again, not ideal, but it's better than nothing at this point. Again, we're advertising, doing all we can do and it's a, it's a, at this point.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion that we approve Ampleo Speech as emergency.
Second.
Mr. Spanish makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Kidwell, to approve the agreement with Ampleo Speech Incorporated with an emergency procurement option. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and the motion to nominate the Powell and News and Rick Watson for the Virginia School Awards Association Media Honor Room.
This is a recommendation, administration's recommending, I have not spoken with Mr. Watson about this, but he doesn't say, but coverage and making things.
Just wait, how about the news?
We have to do a reporter also, so if you'd rather make it happen by the news, we can take that under advisement, but they, the Virginia School Awards Association asks for a reporter and a newspaper, so.
We'll embarrass you even more next time.
It would pay me to have to honk you too, so I agree with you, but.
I'll make that motion, Dick.
Mr. Herbert makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Kidwell, any discussion? Sorry, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Herbert?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chairman, I'd like a motion to go in closed session to discuss personnel, code Virginia two point two dash three seven one one eight one, to discuss school crisis plans, code Virginia two point two dash three seven one one eight nineteen, student admission, code Virginia two point two dash three seven one one eight two, and pending and threatened litigation, code Virginia two point two dash three seven one one eight seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hines seconds, any discussion? Mr. Herbert makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Hines, to go into closed session, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in closed session.